We're under our invocation and then we'll do the pledge with the following hat. If you have one with a hat on, if you'll, out of respect, take your hats off for the pledge, please. Lord, we just come to you right now. We thank you for this time, Lord. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this nation, Lord. We ask your blessings fall upon this nation, fall upon our government, Lord, fall upon this council and this city. Lord, we just love you. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Lord, as we approach Easter and the Easter season and the resurrection, we, we just have so much love for, for you and, and, Lord, what the resurrection means and that your son was raised for our sins. Lord, we love you. Be with us now as we go through this time in your name we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this the March 9th, 2021 meeting to order in the City of Smith Station, Alabama. Thank you, Ms. Green, for the indication of the pledge. Have a roll call vote to the status of call, please.
Mr. Strager?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Langston?
Here.
Mr. Cooley?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Here.
Mayor Caplan?
Here. We have a call. Mr. Bryce, our city clerk, is not with us today. He is ill, so we have the executive assistant, H. George Greener, here. Ms. Brenda Doctor, filling in. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask for someone, you've been given the minutes from the February 23rd, 2021, very good city council meeting via ECOF, as well as hard copy. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as they stand.
Ms. Green.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooley. At this time, as the mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to go into executive session to discuss the name and character of the employee of the City of Smith Station, Alabama.
Make a motion?
Yes, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Let me explain what's about to happen, everyone. We're about to go reconvene, we're about to convene an executive session, have a discussion, discuss the character of an employee. We're going to go back here, you guys stay here. No action can be taken in executive session. This for discussion purposes only because it's against the law to say a name or anything like that in public. So I want you, everyone in this room, to know, no action will be taken in there. Our city attorney, Mr. Rick Chancy, is here. He'll be back there with us. I'm looking for this to possibly take 10 to 15 minutes, and we'll be right back out. I apologize, that is one of the longer than I said. There are no actions taken in the executive session. I'd like the motion to go back into regular session, just somebody make a motion.
Motion to go back into regular session.
Ms. Cooley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Have a roll call vote.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Here.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Ms. Cooley?
I would like you to forward to our city council.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cooley has asked that I bring something to the council's attention. My understanding that there was a vote had at the last, I believe, the last city council meeting, that voted on a resolution that named certain roads within the city limits to certain names. And it's also come to my attention that there was a publication previously had, and the city was made aware, that the roads would be named a certain name, and at least one road was not, not kept to that original published notice, specifically Strager Weeks. And I think the city council ought to revisit that vote in two weeks and review and make sure there were no other names that were altered from the original publication as notified, as held in the public meetings. Mr. Cooley knows about that committee meeting and what was the original intent of the committee was, and I think it ought to be brought back up to the city for a re-vote to go back to the names as originally published. Is that, did I say that right, Mr. Cooley? Yes, yes, I begin.
I want to repeat what you're saying, so I can understand it.
Okay.
You're saying that it has been brought to your attention that the names were originally published to the public and therefore not published again until we voted on them last week, and you feel that we need to go back to the original names that was, when originally published. Any road name that was changed from the original publication, i.e. Strager Weeks?
Yep. I want to go back in two weeks, look at that, and make sure that's not the only, that's the only one. If not, you can revisit it the next meeting, but vote on that, but restore all names back to the original recommendation of the committee. But, look, I understand there is some, it's been gotten confused as to what the post office required, didn't require. There are some typographical and/or punctuation things that the post office would allow. So in keeping with the post office requirements, but go back to those names as the committee originally recommended.
You've heard the motion about Mr. Cooley and the council. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Green. Any discussion? I'd like to make that as item 5A, please. 5A. I'll give you a chance to write that down, or you want to write down a form in the paper. Now, please pardon me, she's writing down what he said. All right. Any more, any discussion? Better roll. Can I have a vote, please?
Mr. Strager?
Upstaying.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Moving now to item 6, new business. Mr. George Strager has asked to speak to the council.
Anyway, I would like to just apologize to the city for everything that has been taking place. And I guess when I first saw this name, Strager Weeks, and I was decided within myself that why is Strager Weeks family so different from all other families that live on that road? Because I felt like, yes, from the highest family to the lowest family, all families live the same. And also during that, when I think about the families, I go back to Perry Weegum, Ed Willem, the Tars, the Thomases, all of us lived on that road. During that time, there's nobody doing anything so much different than anyone else, except live and try to have a good family. So those are some of my reasons. And then, I guess, I looked at it where's, and I got some from the Thomas side, say, if this, this, this is, we're not going to do that. I said, well, by me being George Strager, lived a 75 years, city council for 21 years, the first black, he is the first black guy, that's irrelevant. But as a family, please support someone that you think that might be credible down the line. But, it's, it's, it's kind of hard, but it is what it is. And I have to look at families, and I'm not going to ever separate my family from nobody's family. I'm going to look at it. I'm saying, why is my family, your family, so different from other families? That's why I say, let's do it. That's why I do it.
Okay. I wanted to also add to what you say before we move any further. When the committee met, they had five weeks, they took public comments.
Right.
During those five weeks, the name come up, Strager Weeks, and that's what the committee brought to the council, and, and was voted on and published at the original time. So it never was any of the other names from the very beginning, the council knew nothing about. So it was done, we're going to correct it and move forward with it, and I appreciate you, Mr. Strager, I appreciate the council, I appreciate the councilor, as we move forward. Mr. Cooley?
Mayor, I suggest we make a motion that we suspend the rules and ordinances and resolutions, so we can address the published resolutions and orders on our calendar tonight.
Mr. Cooley has made a recommendation, suspend the rules and ordinances to move forward with the city business as of tonight. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Have a roll call vote.
Mr. Strager?
Upstaying.
Upstaying?
Yeah.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Resolution 2023-94.1, amend resolution 2023-94, establish rules and regulations, usage fees for Smith Station Pavilion and supporting accessories. Will you introduce that forward, please?
Resolution 2020-391, excuse me, 394.1, a resolution for the City of Smith Station to amend the resolution 2020-394, establish rules, regulations, and usage fees for the Smith Station Pavilion and supporting accessories.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Did you want to suspend this and have a first reading to show corrections to bring that to council?
Yes, we're going to do that under ordinance. Okay. Yes, I make a motion to, to add a paragraph here to this resolution. So we need to go back and look at this for next, to add a paragraph about the renter and the party, that the city is not going to be liable for any accidents or anything. And then we also need to add a damage clause to any property. So that needs to be added to this resolution.
Key to the Robert's Rules of Order, I'm asking you to table this, this, this resolution.
So I will, I'm making a motion to table this resolution.
Mr. Langston said second to table this resolution? Any discussion as to why we need to table this resolution? None been brought forth, I call for the vote to table this resolution.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Moving forward to 2021-415, reimbursing times enter the city clerk's cell phone usage.
A resolution for the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to ring Boston City Park Morgan Vice for cell phone usage.
A motion, second. I need a motion. You make a motion, a motion?
Make it.
Langston, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cooley. Any discussion? None been brought forth, I call for the vote.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Moving forward, item 2021-175, establish reduced speed limit of 25 miles per hour within the 1500 block range of Leroy 294, Veterans Drive.
An ordinance of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, to establish a reduced speed limit of 25 miles per hour for public traffic safety within the 1500 block range of Leroy 294, also known as Veterans Drive, in the city limits of Smith Station, Alabama.
Can I get a motion, a second?
Motion.
Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Strager. I do have public comment. Can you make sure this is emailed to the sheriff's department?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? No discussion, then call for the vote.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Out of 2020-174.01, ordinance amendment to reduce short-term rental lodging tax to 5%.
An ordinance of the City of Smith Station, Alabama, amending business license ordinance 2020-174, section 22, short-term accommodation rentals, paragraph C, number three, short-term accommodations rental lodging tax rates, reducing short-term rental lodging tax to 5%.
You've heard the introduction of the change of ordinance and taxes. Can I get a motion, a second?
Make a motion.
Ms. Green?
Second.
Mr. Cooley? Any discussion? None been brought forth, I call for the vote.
Mr. Strager?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Langston?
Yes.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Caplan?
Yes. Moving along to public comments. I want to apologize for probably not doing well on this name, but Ms. Louise M. Carzian. You propose a podium. I'd like to say before anyone speaks tonight that you're allowed three minutes by Alabama state law. After those three minutes, I'd have to ask you to stop speaking.
Let me know when I can begin.
I'll let you know as soon as I say. I don't want to shortchange anybody. There you go.
My name is Miss Caracozia. I live on 185 Leroy 223. I have been building my corner for the last more four, five years almost. Now, somebody has a flea market next door to my house that I cannot sleep or rest in my bedroom with my husband because we have a dog pound there. I don't know what's going on. We got over 12 dogs, big people, living there for over four months. I've been trying to contact the lady. She, I don't know, supposed to be a flea market. Now you tell me you got tenants. What is your license for it? Who's following up this? I just have a question. Did I need an answer? Because I am tired of waking up at 2:40 a.m. and can't sleep in my bedroom. My husband has to get up at 7:00 a.m. to continue, the bills continue. The lady doesn't live here. What's going on here? Sex, health hazard. I have another corner dumping sewage, and then across the street, I got somebody dumping trash. I got videos. You tell me, who I take this to? I don't know what else to do first. Talk to the sheriff, talk to, talk to everybody. They told me to be here. So we got being said, excuse my appearance. I've been up since 2:40 a.m. Who can help me?
I'll let, our code enforcement officer, Mr. Ed Adams, look into it and give us a report. And I'm not saying it will be done in the next 24 hours, but we'll look into it.
It doesn't take 24 hours. It's been four months, and it took me four months to get here.
But Mr. Ed Adams will look into it, and you can call Mr. Ed Adams, or you can call Brenda Doctor in a week or so.
Is the head already offered that he'll be there in the morning?
Okay.
Sometimes tomorrow. I don't know whenever. He has time. I greatly appreciate his effort to be there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope I didn't take over your time.
No, you didn't.
God bless you, stay safe.
Thank you.
But as a council, aren't we able to say that it's not city property?
Correct.
You can't.
I've been there, I, I got court days coming up next month, court, about 3:00, 3:00 on that corner. I have got two people arrested, one more online.
Gotcha.
Her house is a flea market.
That flea market is not city property either.
I don't know why she has a license for a flea market, and we got over 12 dogs over there.
We'll, we'll look into it and give you.
Thank you. We tried to, you know, kind of, I tried to wait, we couldn't wait because it was not safe. Thank you.
Mr. Larry Thomas, 295 Leroy, pre-kicking.
Larry Thomas, I talked to the mayor about a week ago about the situation, about the road change, that the Thomases weren't aware of the road change until, until he found out about it. And it being the mayor, I talked about the situation on the phone, and he said it couldn't be, it wasn't fair. I told him it wasn't fair, because Thomas' name wasn't on there. We didn't know nothing about it. And you told me it couldn't be 390 on there, and I agreed. And you said it should be a neutral road, something like Yonah Road, and you agreed to it. So I'm just trying to find out what's happened, what's going on.
How would our council speak to that?
Can I wait and let everybody talk, and then maybe I can address if anybody else has anything, and after he says what he does.
We have two more Thomases, so let the other Thomases speak, and then he'll answer your question, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Second, Thomas.
Yes, one of the concerns that I was having with my mom, she said she definitely got a letter, only renaming it for the road. And, you know, I, I do feel that, I grew up here at Gregory Smith Station High School, member of Martin missionary Baptist Church, and I feel like that road should have been named as, to represent the whole community, 295. Yeah, a lot of people came through there, and, you know, it was rare respect in their neighborhood. And I just want to know why there wasn't any letter mailed out. She said she never got a letter from a meeting or anything about it, like change something.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow mine with this question. Mr. Harry Thomas?
I'd like to say that he might have tried about the same thing with relative Nick he said. And another thing I want to clear up, too, only someone that I've talked to about the situation that is in this room, it fell out, other than anybody else, I ain't never talked to nobody for that. And my brother told me today, said, that someone told me, said, I've talked to him, and I agree that it goes, you know, say, that's a week's ago, but I just want to clarify that I ain't talked to nobody. Whoever said that I, said that I said I agreed to the road stand, Weeks and Strager, that's wrong.
We'll address that in just a minute.
And I, like, like I said, it suits the road, the, uh, or the Weeks and Strager, and I think the road shouldn't be changed to a different name. And a new name, don't have to be a, a family name. And I have old names that, you know, it may not do as good in anything. And one, I think it was Family, Family Road, Unity Road, Community Road, Martin, King, Red. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all the Thomases, if you want to address.
So, my name's Rick Chancy. I also serve here in this community, went to school with you. I know a lot of y'all as well. The committee met, and Mr. Cooley looked long and hard with his committee on trying to find old names the best he could, with the help he had. He had good help, spent a lot of time working on it, and advertised the best he could. Plenty of people got notice of it because they got plenty of suggestions from all over. Now, did everybody get notice? Undoubtedly, there are people who were missed throughout the community, and I do not doubt that, that'd be nearly impossible to get perfect notice to everyone. But I don't know of any particular procedure either, the committee did the best they could to get the names, to get the information out that the, that the committee was looking for road names and input. And it certainly, some people are happy with the roads, some people are not going to be happy with the roads this way. You'll never make everybody happy. We go up and down the roads of this community and name roads after family, you're going to have name road signs a mile long, right? And a lot of people have contributed to this community. Y'all have taught me, and worked with me, and helped me in my career, and every one of y'all, I know all y'all. So it's impossible. Now, what has been done with this committee has been a recommendation that the name be created in a certain way. That's what the proposal was to go back to, y'all heard today, was to go back to as originally published. However, and I think the mayor or the council has decided they'll take whatever the community wants over the next year, and a year from now, while everybody has a chance to see what the names are, if they like them or not, a year from now, once all, everybody's had time to think about it, digest it, come up with other names or whatever, we will start entertaining any other ideas, to look at names a year from now. But there's absolutely no way that they could get every road right the first time, and it would have to be something. And it is what has been presented, because the committee did all this work, got the information out, and if they didn't get notice, I'm sorry, but a lot of people did, some people, and I don't know how some people did and some people didn't, we're worried about that next year, a year from now. But I think just to put this to an end, it's better to go back to what the committee recommended, get it voted on, and then the next time, y'all are welcome to bring forth any name changes you want to with this community. Talk to any of the council members, get up a petition, whatever you want to do. Bring, and your reasons why that a name should be created or changed. And this, these are not permanent, they don't have to be permanent. Y'all can change a road name anytime, okay? But the recommendation is to go by what the committee, as it was published, it had public meetings, it had public hearings, it went over the process, and that's what the committee brought forth. So I've told the committee, we go back to what was published, vote on that, and a year from now, revisit those issues, okay? Y'all are welcome to bring them back, and I am sure, I didn't see a single road name named after me, unfortunately. I don't know how it got by the committee, but they didn't name a single road after me, after all I've been through in this community. And as many times as I got ran over by Byron Weeks in football, they should at least name a road for me. But they didn't, all right? So we're all, we'll live with it for a year, and the Thomases and the Chancys will get together next year, and we'll find up another name, or come up with some, some common names that everybody can agree to. All right?
We also need to get passes from mail, postal service.
We got to get the post office up and going, we can't drag this out, y'all, this is what's going on, I know, the mayor and the council members have wanted to get these names fixed for years, and we're to that point, so let's get it done, get the post office notified, and y'all can revisit this a year from now. All right?
Thank you. Ms. Regina Mitchell?
Michael Childs, hello. I know that Mayor Copeland is probably tired of hearing from me. I, I do want to thank everyone for actually taking our call and working with us on this. And again, I just want to make, now, reiterate what I was told on why the road was named Strager Weeks Road, and it was based on the fact that my grandfather, and George Strager's grandfather, was, were the first two residents on that road after Mr. Lang. And since Mr. Lang no longer lived in this area, the committee settled on Strager Weeks Road. It had nothing to do with anyone's accomplishments, it had to do with who were the first residents to reside on that road. And I would like to say that, again, the name was published from August to October, we all, we saw that, we had no dispute. Our only concern was when the name changed without any notification. But I would like to thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this, the right thing. Thank you.
Mr. Travis Mitchell?
Guys, I'm not going to beat a deer horse, but I just want to say, thank you so much to the committee for taking the time to hear about this concern. When I was made aware that the road would be named Strager Weeks Road, it filled my heart with joy, because I, for years, the Weeks, the Stragers, they're road models. My grandfather, James Weeks, grew up on that road, his great-grandfather is my, my great-grandfather as my eldest, stayed grew up on that road as well, and it means a lot to our family. But the bigger picture here that breaks my heart is that we're all family. The Stragers, the Weeks, the Thomases, we're all related by blood, and I don't want anyone to feel left out or to be left out. This is a moment for us to show unity and to come together. So, like you said, Mr. Council, in a year we need to revisit this name, that would be a great thing, but like mine said, the name's repubished, and it means a great deal. The Weeks and the Stragers, not only have had a great impact on Smith Station, Alabama, but throughout the world. When you look at having influence in being city and surrounding areas, the, the name holds weight. And again, not to negate the Thomases, but this just means a lot to the family, and I thank you guys for your time and consideration. Thank you.
I'd like to say at this time, I received well over 200 calls in the last two weeks from Weeks, Stragers, every other African-American person I went to school with, and I'm not with, and I'm not joking at all. I want you to know that, that I take pride in telling people that Smith Station does not have a racial problem, and we do not have a racial problem. This has absolutely nothing to do with race, that's special for me. Second, Leroy two-ninety-five has been, in my mind, my entire life, where my friends live. One of my best high school friends, Olive Upshaw, lives there, Keith Weeks was there, I spent the night there in a Weeks family's home, Kiki Weeks was there, I know all these families. And to see how this has come about, and, and I think Regina told me, or Connie told me, that there is no division between families, we're just having a disagreement at the moment. So as your mayor, my, I beg of you all to get together, let us, let us get behind us, the Thomases have hurt feelings now, the, the other people on the road are gonna have hurt feelings, the Morgans and so on and so forth, y'all all now gotta come together as the family that I know with Leroy two-ninety-five. And so as your mayor, I beg of you, please, y'all call each other, love on each other, minister each other, and let's get back to where we were post, I mean, prior to this. That's my, that's my challenge with you guys, and, and let's not let something this simple, as a name of a road, divide a family that's been together since I've been born. So I challenge you all to please to bring that family back together. Any other comment from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, chairman of the road name committee, we have an awesome task ahead of us, and it was never, never our intention to slight any individual or family or, or group of individuals in doing this. We try to stay with historical names as much as possible. Sometimes those historical names got lost, we don't know what they are, so we had to come up with some issues in regards to that. And, uh, I made a comment last, uh, council meeting about we had to make some changes, one of the reasons for this, uh, vote last time was because of some editing that we had to do because of postal requirements. That had nothing to do with the Stringer Weeks situation, other than we had a hyphen in there between that, and the post office doesn't recognize that. Stringer Weeks, within, uh, the post office has already started making many of those changes. If you'll go to the postoffice.com website, and, uh, there's an option down there for you to go down and search by zip code, put in your address, and whichever one you elect to put in, whether it's the old one or the new one, and it will, should reflect the change. If, I'll use mine as an example, two-oh-five Leroy nine-two-nine. If I put that in, it's gonna come up there and show me Leroy nine-two-nine, but it's also gonna show me that it's also two-oh-five Jackson Drive. And that, make a point here, Jackson Drive was not named for my good friend across the way over here. That was a name put on the development back when it was created, and I first walked that property some thirty-five, forty years ago, before a road was ever built, and made a, put down a binder on that, so, uh...
I also need to interject with you, your road is gonna be stronger, right now, until we're gonna get these changes done, we gotta vote on it, go to the post office, so if you put it, well, if you do what he says, it's gonna say Stringer Road.